Good evening, welcome to the Milford Plan Board, Tuesday, April 1st. First order of business is the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 18th minutes.
I'll second it.
We're moved in second and any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Announced a three. Thank you. We don't have any 81p plans. One 10 South Main Street has requested to be extended to the next meeting.
Yeah, the 15th.
15th, so we won't have that. We have an amended site plan for Waters Corporation. Larry, just...
Do we vote for the continued site plan here?
No, we don't know.
Okay.
Larry, I'm gonna hold up on your letter right at the beginning. I'm gonna let them do their presentation because you got the negative part of it.
Yep. Well, I've got town council concurrence.
I understand. So, rather than the... To muddy the waters, soon as... Right away, let's let them make their presentation and then...
Do you want to skip and do number five?
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Street acceptance for Walter Circle?
So, all the work has been completed, only there's one area... Well, there's two areas in the road where the pavement is not... It's still okay, but it's not perfect, let me say. And so, the Highway Department and I agree, or had already spoken with Lobasar, and they are gonna bring an infrared guy in to fix that. So, what I guess I would be asking, I would be recommending that you guys send a favorable, but subject to me confirming that those two areas are taken care of prior to. And the driveways would be as well.
Well, we've done this in the past, and the door is, if it's not done by town meeting, we'll just pass over the articles.
So, subject to completion of...
Prepare to asphalt.
Yes.
Prepare to asphalt.
Got the edges and... There's a thing, yeah. Well, I've looked at it too, where it's nothing major, so...
I'll just have you look at what I write before I send it off.
Have they given any indication of timeline?
Uh...
I'm right here. I'm in that county. I met with two infrared guys this week, yes, they won today. So, as soon as they tell me they can do it, somebody's gonna be there. So, I don't, I'm saying within the next two weeks at most, I'm hoping by next week, worst case, two weeks.
So typically, these are done if there's conditions that it's completed prior to town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
You didn't have a letter on this, Larry, did you?
Nope.
I didn't think so.
So, because the infrared guys are asphalt guys, and the asphalt guys are pretty much off the grid from November to...
Right.
That's why he hasn't been able to get them.
And that's kind of why I'm asking, knowing that with town meeting coming up and knowing that it's not paving season yet.
No, but it will...
It will be soon.
It will be very soon, and it's...
That's why I wasn't sure if it was, you know, six weeks, six months, six years, right? Which is our scope. Yeah. Yeah. And it's not, so is it just curbing and just the...
No.
It's not even the curbing.
Not even curbing.
The, there's one edge, there's one area by one of the manholes where it just didn't...
It's like flaking.
Yeah, and it's not really flaking yet, and it'll, it would...
It will.
But it will flake, exactly. And so, we just want to make sure everything's up. And then, there's another area where there's a low spot by one of the driveways that will have some puddling if it's not fixed. So, that's the second area on the road. And then, there's been, the driveways, the way the driveways end isn't ideal, and so those need to get rounded over, which the law...
So, this is all topco stuff?
Yeah, it's all top, yes. It's really dressing, fine tuning.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah, so this is just, we're looking for a favorable, unfavorable recommendation to sending it to town.
Town meeting, town meeting actually decides whether you accept it or not.
So, I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation for the referral for Walter Circle.
I'll second it.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Announced a three. Okay, Dan Jarv.
Hello, folks.
Yes.
We're here with Waters.
Yep, you're up.
For the record, my name is Peter Gluck, civil engineer with SMN Bank. And Chris Mann, who's real estate director over at Waters is here as well. And thank you for bearing us tonight. Apologize for the little... Can't believe you, it's technology, I guess, excuse me.
Those tri-legged things, they're awful.
Yeah, just me. This is old school, so I should have had it right. Firstly, we were in front of a four-site plan approval. Waters has an interest in putting solar panels over, over part of the parking lot, solar canopies over it. It's part of a logic project, and the project itself has some funding mechanisms that they're working through that have very tight deadlines, and I wanted to secure the funding line at the end of the year.
Yeah, the nation, the national grid.
About the end of the year, national grid, so we've gone through this and tried to move things along with you folks as quick as we possibly could. We started off where we had an introductory meeting with Mrs. Benini, the engineer, and also Mr. Duncan, who was the planning. And we went over the plan with him, and Mr. Duncan was very clear on the interpretation of the zoning at the time, where it's slightly different than we saw. We didn't see anything in there that clearly and deliberately prohibits the canopies from being over aisles in the zoning. However, we did, we do respect the interpretation that Mr. Duncan has and that is due. So, a little bit about where we're looking at is that this is the project at 34 Maple Street, the May building. This is the parking lot right over here that we're looking at, and I think you folks are probably all familiar with the site down there. And I'll jump right to the, right to the plan. When we originally went in and met with Mr. Duncan and Mrs. Benini, we had a solid canopy over the whole parking area over here. And what we did was, we worked with the Soltech, who is the solar contractor and designer of this, and they put together the system, and it's based on modules and a canopy size in fitting them in to this lot in order to get the certain amount of canopies that makes it economically feasible to do it within the front, that they have a certain return that works with the Waters folks. And what we tried to do was maintain a clear area between the aisles where it ranges anywhere from 17 feet, 17 feet, 2 inches to, it's 27 feet over here. But in the other aisles, it's 17-2, it was 18-4, 21-2, 27-5. This aisle is 18-8. So, it didn't meet the full 24-foot width aisle, which you would have for a 90-degree parking. However, it does provide a swath through there, it does provide some daylight into that area, and also for emergency vehicles can get through that, and there would be no obstruction under the canopy anyways, because of the canopy heights. They don't prevent any vehicle, and we do, there is a letter from the fire department that they didn't have any issue with going through this aisle. But this was sort of the compromise that we had looked at and tried to come up with, and to satisfy the zoning, the way we interpreted it, and the intention maybe of the zoning that we wanted, without reconfiguring the whole parking area. This is what we came up with.
Yeah, if I could give you just a little background on the whole project. So, this is phase one. We're looking at two phases that are about 5 megawatt production. At the end of the day, this will supply about 24% of our daily usage at Waters. So, we're taking that off the grid load. This is all part of our 2030 sustainability program that we're working, you know, not just in our Milford office, but worldwide through all our offices and locations, so...
Okay, Larry, you wanna go through that letter?
Yeah, again, this is amended site plan for 34 Main Street, Waters, map 45, block zero, lot 10A. Of course, it's in an IB industrial zone. As Peter had explained, they're looking to put canopies over the parking spaces. There are some 312 existing spaces that, as you can see on, actually, I blew up parts of what was submitted. The last two pages in your packet, the very last page shows a portion of what Peter has on his stand, and the page before shows the underlying compliant parking array. All the stalls are compliant, all the drive aisles are compliant. So, that means the stalls are 9 by 18, and the parking aisles, that's two-way aisles, are 24-foot wide. At any rate, subject property, this portion of the overall campus is 24.81 acres. It's in the Bear Hill Industrial Park. Again, they're looking to construct the canopy solar panels above certain areas. I refer to section 315-23 of the zoning bylaw that relates to canopy-style installations, and I quoted a specific section that, as Peter mentioned, I'd pointed out when we first met back in February, I think it was. So, the quote is, "above paved off-street parking spaces sufficiently so as not to obstruct the use of and access to such parking spaces." So, canopy-style installations are specifically allowed for in those areas, but if they're not allowed beyond the spaces. So, that same section also requires elevated installations, so the parking spaces shall have the maximum height of 18 and a half feet, which, as you can see on the detailed couple pages prior to what we were just looking at, they comply with that. However, there are no provisions in the bylaw that permit canopies to extend beyond the parking spaces themselves into the drive aisle. I've got confirmation from town council, but that's in fact what the bylaw says. Anything other than that would be a zoning violation. Now, if there's an alternative method of doing something, we certainly could amend the zoning bylaw at some point if, you know, needable to putting amendments through at the fall town meeting, but that doesn't help Peter and Chris right now. So, what I'd recommended was that what they have is otherwise approvable. The only catch was, the easy way, and Peter pointed it out, the easy way to confirm whether it meets the current zoning requirements is to look at the width of the drive aisles. And one, two, three of them, well, actually, four of them don't comply, they're still too narrow. All of them is excessively wide, but it was wide on the ground to begin with. Out of that, I think originally was some other access to that far north end of the building when it was first built, because the parking wasn't always there that way, I don't think. But at any rate, the plan's approval but for that. So, to the extent that the board clearly has the ability to grant a conditional approval, that was my recommendation, is to approve it subject to the drive aisles being open.
Okay, Larry, you consider the 18 feet all open enough?
Well, no, it needs to be 20 feet. It's a two-way lane, and all the parking dimensions, it's not just the island, it's not just the drive aisle dimensions, that's the easy way to tell whether it's compliant. The specific defect, so to speak, is that the canopies extend beyond the end of the parking spaces. But it's not consistent in each one of the canopy arrays as you go through. And Peter probably knows right off the top of his head, which, you know, the dimension, just pick one, you know, the dimension on the north side of that drive aisle, which the canopies overhang, is probably different than the flip side of it on the other side.
Yeah, the aisles aren't uniform.
Right.
Although, you know, I'll take that back. The canopy space is not unified way.
Right.
But the drive aisle would be unified with.
Well, but what I'm trying to relay is, the deficiency in the plan as it stands now is discernible the most easiest by the dimension of the aisles. So, it depends less on the point of the why, does it the why? But that's not exactly the point. The point is that in any given instance, you can't extend beyond the edge of the existing parking spaces, which they can't do. It was just an easy way to look at it, and that's what I just explained. So, and this is what I was speaking about earlier, that Peter would probably know this, in one of these arrays versus the other. This one may only be a couple of feet beyond the edge, where if you go on the other side, depending on the installation, this may only be a foot off. Go to this side, this one may be overhanging beyond the edge of the stall, three feet. So, they vary as you progress through. But the only ones that clearly seem to be staying on top of the stalls are these two, because this island, this drive aisle is 27 feet. But even using that as an example, if these canopies extend beyond these parking spaces, that's still a violation. So, it's a doable thing, it just affects the dimension.
Okay, the drive aisle is 24 feet, and they have the 24 feet for the cars to get back in and back out. That's the reason for the drive aisle, so the cars can get in.
Right.
The driving-through area is wide enough for the biggest fire truck, the lighter truck can almost go through sideways. So, the area, the accessibility is fine for the emergency vehicles. The drive aisles down below, where the parking spaces are, are 24 feet. So, I don't see any problem whatsoever with that. If, if the overhang was down to seven or eight feet, now you couldn't get an emergency vehicle in or something, and that would be a problem. The drive aisles are made so the cars can back out of the parking spaces and go home while getting in. The area above the drive aisle, above the drive aisle is wide enough for any emergency vehicle to come down and do it, so I don't see any problem with that whatsoever.
Well, but the bylaw talks about...
It's the way you interpret the bylaw.
All the way the bylaw...
It's been interpreted 60 times P. But I'm, I, when I do it, when I used to do it, the drive aisle, I'd measure the 24 feet for the cars to turn around.
No, no, that's, I'm not debating that. What my point is, that's an easy reference when you look at the plan. But the actual deficiency is that certain canopies extend beyond the existing parking spaces, and that's what's prohibited under our bylaw. Our bylaw doesn't allow for that.
So, if I can...
My interpretation is the other way, the drive aisle is for the cars and everything, and there's no problem. I personally, I have no problem passing this the way it is whatsoever. Hey, does the board get anything to say?
I'll let the town engineer go before I start diving in. So, go ahead.
Well, I didn't mean to cock.
Well, you may answer some of the questions, who knows? Looks like you're going to.
So, that first page, in the orange, I have highlighted the whole sentence that is referenced by town council and Larry in his letter. And the whole sentence says, "Further, such ground-mounted systems shall be included in the calculation of required minimum open space unless installed above paved off-street parking spaces sufficiently elevated so as not to obstruct the use of and access to such parking spaces." So, when you look at the whole sentence, it has to do with a calculation of open space. That is what that has to do with. It has, it's not, it doesn't say that it can only be over parking spaces, it doesn't say it can't be over drive aisles. It says, "If you're doing the open space calculation, if it's over the drive aisle, you have to count it as impervious, additional impervious area. But if it's over a parking space, you don't have to count it as additional impervious area, because it's already impervious." So, I, in my mind, the interpretation here is that the intent was to not double-count the impervious.
Well, that's true. I agree. When we did this, and I do kind of remember, because I wrote it, and, well, Cal Jones isn't here, but both he and Dave were on the board in 2012 when this got adopted. And we based it on the model of solar bylaw that was floating around at the time from, what was it, DEP or, I don't know, anyway. So, the whole idea was to give people a break if they did canopies over parking stalls. It was never intended to do anything...
And I'm not saying, I'm, but this...
So, that was the idea, and that's what I mentioned when we met in February, that this whole thing came about as an exemption from otherwise getting stuck, getting, you know, binged twice on an open space calculation. If it's already impervious, who cares? Except that, when you're talking about parking, then you want it over the parking spaces and nowhere else.
That's not what that says.
Okay, let's not debate it.
Okay. I will stick, I will...
Okay.
Can I, I have a few more things, yes.
Okay.
I'll stick to my script. The zoning regulation, so actually, to start with, Waters is an important economical entity in Milford. We should work within the regulations to help Waters Corp succeed in Milford. They are a good neighbor. In addition, it would be helpful to the Milford community for Waters to be supplying more of their own power and relieving the grid of their impact. So, I think this is an overall good project for the town of Milford, and I think we should do what we can within the regulations to proceed, to move this along. The zoning regulations do not expressly forbid the installation over the drive aisles, and why should they? If the sole purpose of the drive aisle is to access the spaces, why wouldn't the limitations for the spaces be the same as the aisles? So, back to what my father was saying, that it's, even if that wasn't the way it was written, I think that's something we should look at changing, because I think that makes a lot more sense. So, if we forget about common sense for a second, and we look at whether this even counts as a ground-mounted system, if you, if they wanted to put columns with a roof over the parking spaces and stalls with no solar on top of it, is there anything in the bylaw that prohibits that?
Yes, John. I know, I know you and Eric have cut all this stuff up, and you spent more time doing that than anybody at all. When this first started, bothered to say anything about it. The first I saw this is when they came in in February, and since then...
Larry, I told you...
You've spent lots of time trying to cook this up so they don't have to comply. I can't help with it they didn't look at the regs before they drew them up. Yes, you could build a building, a structure, that's gonna need to meet the building code...
Yes.
...over something if everything else complies. That's not what we're talking about. It's a ground-mounted system that's provided for in the bylaw, and that's been settled. The town had, this board has approved several systems. They approved the installations at the Dairy Queen.
Yep.
They've approved the installations at McDonald's at 350 East Main, and all of them were forced to comply because, again, their consultants didn't bother to read the bylaw, and then they came in with it, and then they had to adjust it. And they got approval, and it's working, they're still working. So, I guess all of the word games and running down rabbit holes to cook up hypothetical examples is you're missing a point.
I'm not missing the point. The point is...
This board has consistently applied the interpretation that I relayed. Now, just because I wrote it doesn't necessarily mean I like it. I wrote it based on what was determined to be appropriate, and it's been followed consistently for 12 years. That's been the practices it's brought, that's been the interpretation, which is why, that's what I relayed. So, it doesn't matter. If they want to build a humongous building, get a building permit for it, get a site plan for that. But that's, you know, now, then they're gonna have to do roof-mounted solar on that, which they don't need anything but building permit. But that's not what they're proposing.
I understand that.
Well, then why bother to go down that rabbit hole?
Okay, there's another, there's two members here that...
We get the vote, too, that's the best part.
Yeah.
I guess on that lines, when I look at your application, it does say ground-mounted, so I was kind of curious what the difference between ground-mounted. So, when I go and I think ground-mounted, it's when I drive by, I see a field and they're mounted to the ground. Yours are, in a sense, canopy-mounted. So, there is a, I'm assuming the, there is a structure, and then these, the units are mounted on top of the structure.
Yeah, it's kind of a...
So, like, the units, the solar panels themselves have no structural integrity to the canopy.
Correct. I want to figure that this is the structural member right here.
Yeah, I have it right in front of me.
And then there's the canopies.
Yeah. So, in a sense, they're two separate assemblies. You have a, I have a canopy assembly, and then I have these solar panels that mount to that assembly. Okay, yeah. And I guess when I look at this plans, these plans, and obviously, there is, they're not necessarily just over the parking spots. What was the driving factor of why they're, in a sense, oversized from the parking spots?
The factor of where it is longitudinally on the plan is that the columns line up with the existing parking spines. So, you have the spines right down the middle, the parking spaces are on either side at 90 degrees, the columns fall dead-set in the middle.
Okay.
So, you don't lose any maneuvering space or aisle space or anything, they stay right in the middle there. The panels themselves are a module that this particular company has and that they use, and there's technical reasons why they use that particular module, it gives them the maximum benefit out of that size area, that amount of area for those modules, and the way they set up is they set up in three panels, and you can see that, it's in here, I'm expecting you to see there, but there's three panels, one on each side of the line over there.
Right, okay.
And then you can kind of see it in the cross-section, too, you know, one, two, three.
Of course.
And that's the way they align.
Yeah, are they a standardized panel?
Yeah, they're all standardized.
So, if, I guess, what would be, is there a next-size panel down that can be incorporated, or are you at the mercy of the standardized panels?
So, if we go to the next size of panels down, we lose about 30% of the production of the system. And at that point, the ROI almost does not work. And at that point, the ROI on those does not work, and we're probably, you know, you're looking, you're probably walking away at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, we're also part of this, it's called the ARI program with National Grid. We're actually the first local commercial customer that's been approved by National Grid to be in this program.
Okay.
It's a pilot program. So we're trying to maximize what we're doing here for production on the site and to be, you know, working with them.
And right now, yeah, the footprint that you have, you've maximized, based on the parking spots that you have in the sole production that you can get.
Yeah, so our original version going down to this, we've already pulled out about 10 to 11% of the production. If we went down to clear out everything to full 24 feet, yeah, we'd lose 30% of the system.
Just out of curiosity, what was the, what was the, the original request was full, like end-to-end, in a sense, across each drive aisle?
Yeah, when we first came in and presented and the crease in the middle, it had a canopy across the whole area.
Yeah, yeah.
Which had a better economic value because now you're building two larger ones. Now we're building multiple, you know, not single, but multiple units, so...
Daisy chaining them all together is a little bit...
Yeah, there's a lot more trend, exactly.
Yeah. What was the rationale for, or I guess what was the reason for pulling back on the, the original proposal? Because obviously, we're still having some infiltration into the aisleways, but...
It was a factor of talking to Mr. Duncan, and understanding, trying to keep the aisles open.
Yeah.
And we, and again, we had read the zoning, and we had our certain intentions there as well.
Yeah.
It was trying to have somewhat of a compromise of keeping the modules that worked for them on each one of those, those splines...
Sure.
...all the way across. So it set the geometry of it. And that distance between the two canopies is what was essentially left.
Okay.
You know, it was the maximum that we could do to maintain that configuration. Because it's limited on the existing lot because of the way the park is configured.
Yeah, okay. And then Larry, just going back, the zoning bylaw, it doesn't necessarily, or it doesn't specifically say cannot impede drive aisles? It's interpreted that it can't impede drive aisles?
Well, there, there was, I don't know, it's extra language, but it was, it was added as a way to explain why the canopies were limited to being above the spaces only. It didn't need to be in there, but we felt it was appropriate to kind of round out the statement with, in effect, gratuitous language about the reason that you would limit it to be in all of the spaces.
Right.
Other than the language, it says, obviously, it has to be tall enough above the space that it doesn't impede access, so...
And that's what, yeah, kind of in a, in a black-and-white world of, it doesn't necessarily, you know, say it can't impede the drive aisles, right? From what I'm interpreting on it. We're specific about the heights...
Yep.
And we are, just trying to, you know, about the not, not affecting the impervious calculations. But again, to my interpretation of it, I don't see anything that says that it can't go into the drive aisles. That's, that's kind of my sticky point. That's again, why I've asked that. You know, it doesn't necessarily say that it has to be over the parking spaces, and it can't exceed the parking spaces. And it doesn't say that it can't be, that it's required to only be over the parking spaces and cannot exceed into the drive aisles.
Well, because it's written as an exception, it says unless installed above paved off-street parking spaces.
Okay.
And in any language beyond that is kind of fluff. But it's, it's not talking about actually the drive aisles themselves, it's talking about making sure you can still get in and out of the parking space.
Right.
But the location of where it is above it is limited to 24.
Unless it's a flying car, a roof is going to impede a car with four wheels that's going to back out, right? I mean, unless someone else can...
That's another...
I don't know, I mean, unless, I'm not sure, you know, I know Waters doesn't develop a flying car, so I think we're safe.
We're going to stop at EV chargers.
You know, so... So I don't have any more questions, I'm good.
Charlie, no, I, I don't have any questions. I think it's a, it's a great idea. I think it's, take advantage of the solar.
Oh, absolutely.
And also give some protection for the cars.
Right.
If it was me, when I'm doing this, I would put, so you could put a canopy over the whole thing, and then when we change the zoning bylaw, you could add it on without the expense of doing it. I got no problem passing it the way it is, but I would, again, you people are smarter than I am, so that's what I'd do. I'd build it so it's accessible so you could, you could expand it. It's, believe me...
You're saying maximize your footprint.
Right. The energy code is changing. The energy code, they're pushing this energy code. I go to these classes for my CDL license, my, the CDL, for my instruction supervisor's license, and that's the biggest thing they push at these classes, is the energy code. And they tell us in Boston, that's all they're pushing, is the energy code. And this is taking care, helping to alleviate some of the problems, so I got no problem the way it is. What's...
I guess my only question is, you know, where they've proposed a site plan that they've, that they've scaled back, and I almost would like for them to, you know, if we're going to approve something that goes a little bit into over the parking ways, why not give them the ability to, to extend and maximize their, their solar output? You know, to me, I just don't know how that would affect their overall scheme of things. It sounds like there's going to be some support here, at least from three of us, from that side of it, but I don't want to muddy up the waters too much either, so...
No, again, I agree with you. Again, this site is perfect for it because the loading docks are in the rear with a different drive, drive area to get to the loading dock, so there's not going to be any. But the height of it's going to be 18 feet...
Yep.
...on the anyway, so there's, the bridges on the highway are only 14 feet.
Exactly.
So you're not going to do it. So no matter what, which way you look at it, it's not impeding traffic, it's not impeding emergency vehicles.
Correct.
We have a letter here, we didn't go through the letters, we only have the two letters, one from the fire department, which he agrees, has no problem with it, and the highway department, which, again, here'd be only the thing, so I got, what's the...
To Chris's point, I would say, I think it probably makes sense to approve it as is, and then if they want to come back with an amended site plan going over the whole thing...
Right, at least get some moving forward today, and if they want to...
They're, they're in a time crunch.
Yep, and if they want to take provisions to expand, they can.
Well, again, if you're going to, if you're going to put the beams in, put them in so they hold it, and then you can add on, add on later. I mean, I don't want to go with the whole thing.
No.
I got no problem at all.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to go through the continuation aspect of it.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we have a restriction with National Grid of up to 1 megawatt, so we will build and design up to there with your approval and support. Appreciate it.
Is there any possibility coming back for the other building, too?
So there is a, yeah, there is a phase two, so that is in a different, it's in what they call their group study. So with National Grid, that takes anywhere from...
Forever.
That was the other end. He was going to give you a lower number, like 10 years.
Yeah, so it's 18 to 24 months on the group study. So these both projects went in at the same time in January. This is, like I said, the ARI program. We need to be completed, installed, in what they call live by December 31st to get their incentive against this. So, yeah, we are against time. And I hope to be back in late '25, early '26 for actually the larger, which is three times this, which will be on the other, on the other lot.
Okay. So please, the board.
Make a motion to approve the amended site plan for Waters Corporation at 34 Maple Street.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of three. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we followed the zoning bylaw. I'm glad we're going to be retiring soon. I don't have to wait so long.
Can't retire, Larry, you got to rewrite the zoning bylaw. Tighten it up.
No ambiguity.
Okay. Next, we got ZBA special permit referral for 225 West Creek.
They're looking to construct a contractor's yard. This had been proposed originally, four contractor's yards were allowed, and so they'd been waiting, and one year or so ago, we added that use to the CC zone. Proposal includes the construction of a 30 by 120 square foot, two-story building, shouldn't be square feet, anyway. The 3,600 square foot first floor will consist of contractor's storage and garage space. A 12,000 square foot second-story mezzanine will utilize for offices. Access to the site will be via an easement over the adjacent parking lot for the office building at 215 West. Off-street parking is to be provided for 15 spaces where 11 are required. All relevant zoning requirements appear to be met, so I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA for the special permit. They'll be back for site...
They'll be back for a site plan, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I have no questions.
No questions.
All right, so make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA for Alpine Place at 225 West Street.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, send a favorable recommendation. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of three.
Right along, 31 Front Street.
Actually, we got Front Street, yeah.
ZBA variance for the highway department. They construct a new salt shed on the subject property. The existing wood-framed shed does not provide adequate cover for storage area, salt storage area. The proposal is construct a 55 by 140-foot canvas-covered Quonset hut-style salt shed over the vicinity of the existing 40 by 80 wooden shed. The setback from Front Street on the east is proposed to be 7.15 feet. 25-foot front yards required. Environmental regulations prohibit open storage of salt in the WR1 aqua areas, and obviously the old shed needs to be replaced. Therefore, recommend favorable report to ZBA.
Any comments from the board?
My only question is, why canvas?
I, I agree why it shouldn't be, but the size, the size of the, to construct a building the size of that, especially in this time.
Like aluminum, maybe, you know?
No, it's, as you can see, the size of the old shed...
Yep.
...and the size of the new shed, it's, it would be probably cost prohibitive, especially in this time. And they do run out of salt...
Yep.
...constantly.
But you know it.
Because you can't use, you can't use sand. So you're using salt all the time, so...
Just curious, it just seems like a waste.
No, it's, I agree with you, I agree with you, but...
I think in a couple of years, it'll be called Torn to Shreds. I mean, but...
But the price of replacing the canvas compared to steel. And she, yes.
No, I don't have any questions tonight. I was looking over.
Make a motion.
You want it?
Make a motion.
No, all right, all right. You want me to?
Sure.
All right, all right, I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA for the Milford Highway Department located at 31 Front Street.
You want a second?
A little second.
I'm just closing the door for the noise.
Yeah, I guess quick discussion side of it. Whether it's a canvas or, you know, an aluminum, yes, from our standpoint, it wouldn't really make a difference from the overall footprint of it, so I look at that from that standpoint. I, I agree with you, as a, as a taxpayer, you know, did we exhaust the, the different price points for that? And, you know, and that would be a question for the, our highway, you know, surveyor of why a canvas over an aluminum or steel or anything like that, you know? Certainly, you would think that whereas it snows and that the weight of some snow maybe, I don't know, but Scott can answer those questions, and I'm sure he can answer them well. But I'm still in favor of the footprint and the change overall of it.
Again, what I told you before, is they, they built a small area for the sand, and that had canvas, and that's going to be at least 15 years old, and it's still intact and everything, so...
And this is necessary for the footprint, because of the placement of the footprint in spite of the actual structural type, so...
Motion and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of three.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that motion.
Moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of three. Good evening.